Okay. The call, the meeting in order, roll call.
Trustee Markarth?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
He is here.
President Byrne?
Here. Uh, would, uh, is there a motion to approve? Trustee Cook, President Protem?
So made.
There's a second?
Second.
There you go, call.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we are called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, before we get to the agenda, which would be citizens wishing to address the board, I just want to take a second to, um, take a moment to, um, um, express our heartfelt, um, condolences to the people who, um, lost lives in the fire we had in town over, over the weekend or the other day, and, um, just very bad situation, so. Okay, any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on the agenda that you'll get to address later? No? Okay. Then, uh, were the president's report correct? Okay, first item is a proclamation for Meatless Monday in the village of Vernon Hills. Uh, whereas removing animal products from our diets reduces the risk of various ailments, including heart disease, high blood pressure, stroke, various cancers and diabetes, and a plant-based diet helps protect the environment by reducing our carbon footprint, preserving forests, grasslands, and wildlife habitats, and reduces the pollution of our waterways. A growing number of people are reducing their meat consumption to help prevent animal cruelty. Since Meatless Monday was launched in 1985, more than 35 million Americans have explored a plant-based diet and reduced their consumption of meat, dairy, eggs, and major food manufacturers and national franchises are marketing more vegan options in response to this growing demand. Now therefore being resolved by the village president and the board of trustees that the village of Vernon Hills recognizes March 20th, 2023 as National Meatless Monday, and call upon all residents to explore the benefits and flavors of a wholesome, plant-based diet. Um, and the, Joey, the person who brought this to us, did you want to come up and say a couple things?
Absolutely.
And if you could state your name and address for the record, so you can say?
Absolutely. Joseph Deros Thomasauskas, 211 Mystic Place, Vernon Hills, Illinois. My name is Joseph Deros Thomasauskas, resident of Vernon Hills and former product of the Hawthorne and Vernon Hills education system. I wanted to take the time to thank you for approving the proclamation declaring March 20th as Meatout Day. As an animal activist, I've worked with many other governing boards, and as you can imagine, it's not always this easy to work with or be heard by local government. I wanted to take a moment to commend you and recognize how you and the village manager, John, truly stand up by making the request process straightforward, streamlined, and timely. I wanted to close by talking about power and duty. The definition of power is the ability to direct or influence the behavior of others or course of events. I'm truly excited that you've decided to help use the power vested in you to help educate the citizens of Vernon Hills on the scientifically proven environmental and health benefits of reducing their consumption of animal products. I'm happy to help citizen any way forward I can managing the initiative, and any help you may need, please reach out to me. Thank you again for taking the time to consider this progressive initiative.
Thank you. Enjoy here. We'll give you, we'll let you have this copy of the proclamation.
I'd be interested.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, next, Planning and Zoning Commission appointments?
Yes, thank you. Um, so with the previous retirements of planning and zoning commissioners below Garag and Hesner, the village's planning and zoning commission currently has three vacant positions out of the seven-member body. Earlier this year, the village sought applications from Vernon Hills residents with interest in serving their community on this important commission. In total, the village received four applications. Interviews with four applicants were conducted by village staff and Chairman Morris, and each applicant's credentials were shared with President Byrne. After his review and consideration, President Byrne has recommended the appointments of Heather Lise, Denise Nabbitt, and Nate Smith to fill these three planning and zoning commissioner vacancies. Ms. Lise and Ms. Nabbitt are here with us this evening for their appointment, and Mr. Smith's consideration for appointment is scheduled for the upcoming April 4th village board meeting. Ms. Heather Lise is a four-year resident of Vernon Hills and has a background in civil engineering. Ms. Lise is currently serving as the village engineer for the village of Barrington. Ms. Nabbitt is a 21-year resident of Vernon Hills and has a professional background in restaurant management and real estate. Ms. Nabbitt currently works as a real estate broker for app properties. The appointments of Heather Lise and Denise Nabbitt are before the board this evening for final consideration and approval.
Okay, so, um, should we do them?
We can do a motion.
I would do them one at a time.
One at a time? Okay. Well, we will do Heather Lise first.
Okay. So is there a motion to appoint? Do you want to have them come up for her? Do you want to?
Well, we'll need to confirm their appointment, and then I'll swear them in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Heather Lise to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion, a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, Heather, would you jump me up front, please? Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? Repeat after me. I, Heather Lise.
I, Heather Lise.
Having been appointed to the position?
Having been appointed to the position?
Of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Yes, Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
In the village of Vernon Hills?
The village of Vernon Hills.
In the county of Lake?
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Of Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, is, and then we'll get back to, if either want to make a comment in a second, it, then is there a motion to approve the appointment of Denise Nabbitt to the?
Motion to approve the appointment of Denise Nabbitt.
Second. Okay, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, Denise, your turn. Okay, raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Denise Nabbitt?
I, Denise Nabbitt.
Having been appointed to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Having been appointed to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
In the village of Vernon Hills?
In the village of Vernon Hills.
In the county of Lake?
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Now, would either of you care to say anything? I mean, you don't have to, but you may feel free to do so. Okay. No? You don't need to.
I'm excited, thank you.
Okay. And then the other one will be at the April 4th meeting. Okay, thank you. All right, um, next item is village manager, Hartman Park planned improvements?
Thank you. Uh, as many of you may know, earlier this month, it was announced that the Vernon Hills Park District has been awarded an OSLAD, which is an open-spaced land acquisition and development grant from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, uh, for improvements that are going to be made to Hartman Park. Uh, this grant is among $60 million in funding that was awarded across 118 park projects across Illinois. Uh, with us this evening to share information on this project is Vernon Hills Park District Executive Director Jeff Fujuru.
Good evening. It's a two-for-Tuesday here, right? You got me twice. We're really excited about this project. Um, it's, uh, it's been in the works for a few years, uh, and then when COVID hit, we had to kind of put, put the brakes on. Uh, but this, this, what you see before you is, is the master site plan. Um, the OSLAD grant program is sponsored through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and as Kevin mentioned, um, there's $60 million. This is the most that the governor has ever, uh, put out for this particular grant. Usually, it's somewhere between 15 and 25 million. So to have access to 60 million for improvements on open space is really, uh, really a nice positive sign, and he's already earmarked for next year's budget another 60 million. So we're looking at other options, uh, to do some continued improvements in our parks. This park, um, most of you, I'm sure, know where Hartman Park is. Uh, this, this particular project, it just needs, it needs a huge facelift. Uh, Hartman was our first park, uh, in the community, uh, from a, from a large, uh, you know, just usage standpoint. If you've ever been around the park, you knew recently, um, it housed our Special Recreation Association, which we've, uh, most recently, we've razed that building, uh, and they moved into a new facility in, in the village of Munda Line. Um, it has approximately, currently, it has about a quarter-mile walk path around the park. Part of this project is to completely renovate that. Um, we have a accessible playground that's going on 25 years old. Most playgrounds in the industry, um, you're, you're going to try to replace them within 20 years, so this has definitely met its life. And so the new playground that we've designed, which is a part of the, um, part of the photographs you'll see tonight, is completely and fully accessible. There's two entry points in Hartman Park, one from the neighborhood to the west, and then there's another kind of north, which is kind of feeding into Indian Creek, and both of the entry points from those, those positions are not ADA accessible. So this will be part of the plan, too, that we're going to make sure the sloping that envelopes into the park is accessible, fully accessible. Um, so we're excited about that option. As you come in from the north end, you'll see, um, and I think, Mike, if you can maybe move some of the slides, uh, so this is, this is, I'll start with the pathwork that you see, and it's literally every 10 feet that you walk within the park has got some huge asphalt cracks in it. It's, it's going on 25 to 30 years old, and it just needs to be, um, completely replaced. You can go to the next slide, Mike. Thank you. Um, you can keep going. Okay, this is the parking lot. So at Hartman, there was a building in between that housed the SRA CLC, and both to the north and south of that were parking lots. Uh, now that we've razed that building, so, but those, both of those parking lots, as you can see here, just are in complete disrepair, and so we need to fix that, and that's part of this grant, too, that we're going to completely renovate both of those playgrounds, or, um, those parking lots. Uh, next slide, please, Mike. You can keep going. Thank you. This is the playground, the existing playground. Um, playground we're putting in is approximately, playgrounds by standards today, on average, might be 150 to $200,000 for, for a complete renovation. This one is north of 300,000. We're putting in a, uh, a port and play surface similar to maybe what you saw at Kids Castle. Um, so that's part of the accessibility that we're going to be implementing here. Uh, go ahead, Mike. Thanks. Continue on. Okay, this is at the north end. Um, this is detention area. As you come in, and we're going to convert that into a pollinator garden. Um, so we're excited about that, and that is just another educational opportunity. There'll be some, um, some kiosks there with signage, just, uh, how important it is to see butterflies and, you know, have that within, just kind of that nature aspect within the park. Uh, you can go ahead, Mike. Community gardens, we currently have nine, uh, at the far north end of the park. We're going to relocate these to where we looked, where we took down the building. So as you enter the park right in the center, our plan is to put 12 to 15 new garden plots, uh, as you come into the building, or into the park, sorry. You can keep going. Um, this is an area right next to, we have, if you haven't by, there's an inline hockey facility that exists with a sport court. Uh, it's used as a dual purpose. It's also used for soccer. Uh, the population in that, in that park area like doing soccer, but they also, the inline hockey. So we're going to add a basketball court, uh, right next to that. And then just to the, you don't see in the picture, but just to the west of the, the inline, the basketball, and then there's two sand volleyball courts that exist. Uh, next slide, please, Mike. And this is a, a large roofing replacement that we're going to do on the picnic shelter. There's a very large picnic shelter in the park, um, that gets used quite a bit, and that's going to be kind of the completion on that. So I think that's all the projects, but other things that go on in this park, we have, we have six ADA outdoor fitness stations along the path for people to use. That was put in for our, uh, our special needs active adult program. There's a, currently a pavilion there. There's a brick 1,000 square foot, um, again, accessible pavilion. Currently, five days a week, our special rec association uses that to facilitate an active adult program in there for special, for adults with special needs at our, all members of our Vernon Hills community. So beyond that, there's three T-ball fields right in the center. We're not doing anything with those. Um, there's a kiosk at the far south end that we work with Cook Library. They, they house that, just reading materials. Um, and then I think, you know, just, we're doing a lot of, just a lot of ADA improvements in around the park. Uh, we know it's a, it's a great location for national night out in the police department, where you see, you know, a couple hundred thousand people, a lot of the people in that neighborhood that come out. The one thing really unique with Hartman is it's probably out of our 25 parks, it's probably one of our most used, heavily-used parks. Just the population in that area come out and they just, they look at it, it's like a gem for their neighborhood and the community, and they use it religiously. And quite frankly, um, we get very little vandalism in that park. People really care about it. Um, so this is going to commence in spring of '24, so we'll spend the rest of the year doing some planning and getting it out to bid. Um, the grant we received was for $565,000, so the OSLAD grant is a 50-50 grant. Um, so we're committed to the other half of that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, we just want to, you know, bring it to the board's, um, attention, bring it to the community's attention. I think if you keep going, Mike, you'll see some pictures of, of the playground. This is what it's intended to look like.
Trustee Forster?
I can't remember. Are there restrooms there?
There are, yeah, in the Hartman building, in the pavilion.
That's right.
Right off the back of it, there's, there's a male and female.
So are you doing, you didn't mention that, so you're not doing anything to the?
Not anything to the building, no.
Trustee Oppenheim? Is there, is there a need for additional pickleball in that facility?
I don't think we could fit it in there, to be honest. We're, um,
Do they use all three of the T-ball fields?
They do.
All the time?
Yeah, yeah, our youth, uh, our youth baseball and, uh, girls softball program, that affiliate, uses them quite a bit. Yeah.
How many pickleball courts do we have?
We have eight. We have six at Deer Path and two right out at Lashen here.
Trustee Schenk?
So, um, it looks great. It's always great to see you guys improving the parks when you can. After this park is complete, how many parks would you say, uh, like, I know you guys have been rehabbing a lot of the equipment and everything in the parks. How close are you to having 100% fully rehabbed on the equipment, on the playgrounds, after this one?
So what we have, Mike, is we have, uh, in our, we have a playground replacement program, so it all depends on how, how they age out. Like, just this past year, we did improvements at Deer Path at Warrington.
Yeah.
Playground are designed for two to five, and then five to 12. And so the five to 12 implements were put in a few years ago. We just updated the two to five within the last month. Um, Gross Point has two playgrounds. They have one up at kind of the top, up by the ballfields, and then kind of the other end on the west end.
Right.
And that playground is scheduled to be, uh, put in, uh, the end of April, so another, another month or so. And then we just did some at, um, Westwood Park, you know, Westwood, which is right off of 45 here. Um, and it's just a small, little playground, and we did, we added some two to five implements there. Uh, the next, uh, we're doing, we're looking at Hawthorne Melody is a playground we're scheduled to do next year. Uh, we're also looking at doing some, uh, improvements at Century Park. If you know, parallel to the Sled Hill, there's kind of a, a swing that you go down, you know?
It's a blind.
Yeah. Pike right?
Love it.
Yeah, so that's, that's getting, that's getting up there. Um, just coming in the next couple weeks, we're replacing our cricket pitch out at the north end. Um, that was, uh, that was vandalized over the winter. Um, and so to replace a pitch is about 50 grand. And that's one of the things we've been working closely with the police department. Just this last year, we've experienced over $100,000 in vandalism to our parks, buildings, and, and so, you know, just for, for us, just to do any kind of PSA we can do to let residents know, if you see something, just call 911. Um, it's, it's been really a tough year for us with bathrooms, outdoor bathrooms that have been completely demolished, this particular incident in our cricket pitch that we experienced. And so we're, we're talking with the police department a lot more. We're sharing information with them. Our skate park was damaged just a few months ago. Um, so the more we can get the word out and just, uh, you know, if people see something suspicious, just call 911. We, we want to catch people, and we want to make them pay for it. You know, we need restitution on, on this type of thing. It's important.
Trustee Oppenheim?
So, so we have cameras on some of the roadways. Do we need to pay for cameras to protect the parks?
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, several cameras in some of our key points in our parks. Um, and a lot of the problem is they're not lit well enough, and so you're getting dark shadows. Um, so it's, it's a concentrated effort that we work with, uh, again, just, just police and trying to get, uh, as much attention. And the police are in our parks. I mean, they do police our parks in the evening, but these are just, you know, they're incidents that we just can't control. And I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about Hartman Park, but I'm certainly happy to, I want to bring that to everyone's attention because it's a needed, it's a need advice for us, any help we can get.
Trustee Takaoka?
I'm going to digress here because I got an idea.
Okay, great.
It's along the pickleball, because you know, we've been trying to do this pickleball thing for two years now. What do you think if we get some warehouse space, because there's a ton of it, and do indoor?
When you say we get air?
The park district and village. It's a collaboration. We could figure it out, but what do you think about that? Because, you know, the outdoor thing is one thing, but here, um, you know, with the weather, indoor would be huge.
Yeah.
And there's a ton of warehouse space, as we know, in corporate woods. So I was in Kansas, I'm in Kansas City a lot because I went and saw the chicken and pickle setup. It's unbelievable, but their indoor portion is, is, is awesome, and we got tons of indoor space. So instead of us looking outside, why don't we go indoor?
You know, Craig, I think if there's a, you know, when we have our next liaison meeting, I think it'd be a good subject matter to, and, because I know our, our, at our community center, we're doing three, we're doing two nights a week, and we're doing Sundays, and we're packed. I mean, we're, they're indoor courts, and we're putting up three or four courts, but they're, they're constantly full. Thanks. Okay.
All right, uh, I got a question.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, Jeff, um, what, what kind of donations have come in from, like, Everly, for example? The apartments and duplexes down there and, uh, you know, corporate, kind of like those that are?
Yeah, so for, you're talking about the developer impact fees, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so between Everly and between the mall, uh, those funds, like, for example, Hartman Park is going to be earmarked, uh, to do those improvements. Uh, we're also going to be doing a community spray ground, um, that we're going to commence that project later this summer. Um, and so I know, I know at least Kevin has apprised the board about that community project. So proceeds from those two, um, developments are, are going back into the community to, uh, to fund these projects.
Yeah, but I mean, well, how much money is that?
Between, between Everly and the mall, I believe last year was somewhere around $2 million.
Okay. So that's going to do the projects you just outlined?
And then some, yes.
Well, that's good then, right?
Well, that's, that's, I think that's the great thing about that particular project and that, uh, you know, that procedure helps us immensely and has immensely over the last, you know, 25 or 30 years, do a lot of really great, um, capital improvements for, for our parks and our facilities and for our citizens.
Right.
It's been fantastic.
So that, that's a good thing.
It's a great thing. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, only other speaking part from staff is the AED update, correct?
Yes.
Our new director of public works?
Yeah, we wanted to give a quick update, um, following up on the AED conversation we had at the last board meeting. So actually, prior to that board meeting, public works staff was inspecting the AEDs in the beginning of the year, and some of the component parts, um, were not available for replacement anymore. They're being phased out by the manufacturers. We had already ordered, um, all new AEDs for, um, for our facilities. So it's the perfect time to, uh, you know, look at any, any changes. Um, we've looked at adding an additional one at the V-HAC in the Pinwheel, so we would have three in that area to give more, kind of more comprehensive coverage. We also, um, are looking at the existing signs, replacing the signs so that they're, um, more easily visible when the room, in, in any given room where you're, where you're coming up to them, and especially at the V-HAC, where some of those, um, were hard to find, so we added some posts, um, and additional signs. You'll see, there's a list of them that should be in front of you that has, um, all the village AEDs. As far as next steps go, uh, we're working with the police department to look at some newer technologies they have to provide some more comprehensive mapping. Um, but at this time, we're still looking into what, what kind of capabilities we're able to do. So, uh, when we have more information on that, we'll bring it back to the board.
It's a good first step. I mean, you hope you never have to use these, but they, they do work. So if people know how to use them, it's most important, so. I was just going to say, not just communication, finding, you know, making sure everybody knows about all the AEDs, and then maybe down the road, if we have something with the local businesses, putting them in, you know, I know they're in Target, but like Home Depot, all those places, too, to work with them, too. I'm not sure how, right now, how that would work, but, um, the more, the better, because if it saves one life, they were all worth it. That's the way I look at it, so. But the more, the better, because if it saves one life, they were all worth it. That's the way I look at it, so.
So is this, this is the list of just the Village-owned, not the Park District?
Correct. These are the Village facility AEDs. The police department also has some of their own. But yes, this doesn't count for any of the ones in private businesses or anything associated with the Park District.
Maybe we should develop a master, a master list, so we know where the Park District ones are, and then we can publicize all of that as well.
Yeah, so the technology that Director Venata was alluding to, there's actually an app that's out there that's still in development and being built from a database standpoint. But essentially, this app, you could download on your phone. And not only would it give you the location of, for example, the Village facilities, but any business or location could register their location as being a location that has an AED. And so if you're in that emergency situation, you could pull up the app, and it could show you within your proximity, using Geolocate, where the nearest AED is. We're not there yet to necessarily, this app hasn't been fully vetted, but that's, I think, maybe where you're going, Dr. Oppenheim, as far as a more comprehensive map on not just Village facilities, but overall within the Village community.
I'm going to type in.
I think it's called-
I'm curious, in Google Maps, if it shows up. It doesn't, but it'd be nice if you just typed it into Google Maps.
I think the app is Pulse Point, possibly, is what, is that what you guys are looking at? Because I talked to Chief, and that's one that I found where people can just go, like, here's the picture of the Village Hall where it's located, and then it's got to be confirmed by like a public official or a safety, some public safety. Now, again, this is all great, but people knowing about it and knowing how to use it, I mean, it'd be great to have some kind of campaign. Could it possibly be, if over a certain square footage, do we make it a requirement? Is that just not possible? How much are these units? A couple thousand?
There, I know going back a few years ago, we end up, because I actually was pushing because of V-HAC, and I coached out there. And I know, actually, it actually wasn't from our unit, but by the police that was out there with the gentleman that suffered a heart attack. And if it wasn't for them, he wouldn't be here. But I know that we end up having, the systems that we had for, have at V-HAC, they also had a control where they were out there, they weren't taken in at night or anything. They were on a panel. If someone were to tamper with them or steal them, they also had a cloaking device that did a location with them. So the years have coming on, I know, I don't know, Park District hear what they do, but a lot of them, where I'm at, they have several of the units, and they're taken with, taken out every time to some sports event or anything that's done. So the cloaking aspect of things are here to come. But I do also know that Public Works here in Vernon Hills, even where I'm at, everybody, we go through the training every year, every year on it.
And the schools have a number of them mounted in the building, as well as a number of the portable units that are carried to events.
Right.
It's more well-known than you really realize. It's-
It's a stressful situation when something happens for somebody to go find one, so that's-
Well, and it's a mandate.
But of course, the first thing you do is call 911.
And the training involved is mandated by both IHSA and IESA for all coaches.
And with that note, the 28th Countryside Fire Department is still hosting and taking CPR and AED training, if you guys want to sign up, March 28th.
Countryside, you're saying? Countryside?
Yeah, Countryside. And then next month would be over at the Park District. Fireman Tony.
Yep. Any other comments or questions on this issue?
Thanks for the update.
Yep, appreciate it. Okay, next item then would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through E?
Motion to approve items A3.
Seconded. A motion of second. Comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. We have no unfinished additional business, correct? Okay. Is there any new business or communication to come forward, the board? Okay, hearing none then. Are we closed, well, we would-
We'll do that after the committee of the whole meeting.
After committee of the whole, okay, all right. Then is there a motion to adjourn the Village Board meeting and go to Committee of the Whole?
Motion to adjourn the Village Board meeting and go to the Committee of the Whole.
Second. Motion of second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Back to you, Mayor.
I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order their motion to appoint the Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Do the roll call on that.
That's what I thought.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye. Okay, first item of business is the approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of March 7, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Second item of business, Liquor Barn 700 North Milwaukee Avenue Amendment to the Liquor Code to establish a license class for limited onsite consumption?
Thank you. This is a follow-up of a discussion that we started on March 7. The request of Liquor Barn to amend the liquor code to allow limited onsite consumption in certain establishments. So at the March 7 meeting, the general consensus was, from the Committee of the Whole, that this would be acceptable, subject to working out some of the details. So in your packet today, I have a memo that addresses some of the questions that were asked at the March 7 meeting, namely, just making sure that we can distinguish between this license, making it available to be only, limiting the size to larger stores. By looking at the square footage of the stores that are licensed, that have a B license currently, I had suggested the 10,000 square foot cutoff would separate the smaller stores and the, you know, your home improvement, your home goods stores and pharmacies would be smaller than that. And so, and then the other piece of it would be ensuring that the main use of that store, that its primary revenue was coming from alcohol sales. So those are the three components. I've gone ahead and drafted the amendment, so you can see what it looked like. It's attached to the memo. Liquor Barn has seen this and had no additional comments on it. They are here if you have questions for them. But the, as it's drafted right now, there were a couple of items that I did not include, which was a specific area within the store. If there was direction to do that, we could add that as well, if this were to come back again. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on it. There is also, just real quick, a fee suggested, $300 application fee and a $500 annual fee. We had no comparable license that would be a supplementary style license in the code. So I used the closest license fee structure that I could find, which was the fraternal organization, which was limited by having membership. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Section 1, number 9, you reference not more than one Class P license shall be issued at any one time in the Village. Can you expand on that?
So that's sort of the standard language. All of our classes end with a quantity, except for the G, which is annual for special events. So this is just setting up the fact that there would be one. So if the direction was to move ahead with this, we would prepare it for adoption by creating a quantity of one in the code.
Well, we really only have two businesses that this, with all the criteria you've put in it, that we really only have two businesses this would apply to, correct?
That's correct.
So if that second business would choose to apply for a P, would that have to get changed, or?
We do that with all the license classes. We adjust the number available as they're issued.
Yeah, in the past, what we've done is if somebody closes their doors and their license goes away, we reduce it by one. And when somebody else comes in and gets a new license, we add one. That's been, hasn't that been standard procedure pretty much? Yeah.
Yes.
Chairman Cook, if I may add, that is really the best way to conduct your liquor license program. Because if you have extra licenses on the books, it's more difficult to deny a license if you want to. You have to have cause to deny a license. If, for example, we would say there are no more than two licenses, we only give out one, and there's one available. You would actually need good cause to deny. If you only have one on the books and you have to create the license, it's really up to the discretion of the liquor committee, sole discretion, as to whether or not you want to create a new license at any one time. And most communities want to maintain that type of control when it comes to liquor. So your code is like most others in that regard.
Yeah, which is the same reason it goes down when a business goes away.
Always match what's out there. Exactly.
Other comments from the board? This looks like it covers everything. I mean, you're limiting, you know, the square feet. And 75% of the store's revenue has to be derived from alcohol. So it pretty much covers the parameters we were looking for, I think. Any other comments from the board? Trustee Oppenheim?
3.3I beer-serving, 16-ounce bottle or glass or a flight consisting of up to four glasses with a volume of not more than four ounces. Is that four ounces each?
Yes, that's correct. So the idea was, one way or the other, you could come to that total volume of 16 ounces.
So you might want to add the word "each." Otherwise, implies it's a total of four ounces max.
Anything else anybody wanted to add or have a question about?
I have a question. Andrew, did you look at dram shop insurance?
I did not yet. That is a good question. That was one of the things that did come up, but I did not double-check that one.
We may add that to the ordinance as well, requirement that the business obtain dram shop insurance before they go into this program.
So since this is only a draft ordinance, and you're going to be adding those couple other pieces of language, then we need no action tonight, correct?
No, just really, direction to prepare a final ordinance for the board approval.
So that would-
Consensus.
In the form of a motion, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. All right, then is there a, if there's no other discussion, is there a motion to have staff draft the ordinance?
Motion to proceed.
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, and the dram shop, the liquor license, the being Liquor Barn or whatever else it is, they should have liquor liability and dram shop to start. That accurate, Jim?
Liquor liability, yes. As far as dram shop, I'm not sure, Mayor, because they don't serve liquor like a bar serves liquor, which is what they're going into now. So I don't think they would be carrying dram shop at this point, just at the package liquor sale store. But that's going to change. So I think we should look into the dram shop issue and require it.
Yeah, okay, or get a copy of their policy to take a look at it.
Yeah, definitely we need to do our due diligence on that issue.
Yeah, we can, I mean, if we ask for it, they're going to ship it with us. Well, I guess my other question is, you know, Captain Morgan coming in, do they come in and provide their own dram shop liquor liability? In other words, if they're putting in their personnel to serve it as a sample?
Referring to like a manufacturer, correct, or a distributor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Tom.
Liquor Barn's here, right? Maybe they can answer that question.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Marcel Shansky from Liquor Barn. So what you brought up, Mayor, is it's a little bit different because it's more classified as a sampling. And all those sampling agencies, they carry their own liquor liability policy as well because it is not, they're not serving like a bar, essentially. They don't have to carry dram shop, but all their tasters are Basset certified.
Okay, well, thank you for the info. I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
We vote on the motion to direct staff to finalize the ordinance?
Right. So we have-
Motion to direct staff for the comments.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. If there are no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
And Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next item is the Fairway Logistics Center, 440 Fairway Drive, concept presentation for a new spec distribution center?
Thank you. Staff has received a concept review request from KBC Advisors. I will introduce them in just a moment. But they have requested a review of a speculative two-unit warehouse and office building. The site is currently developed with a office building that is vacant. It is under lease for an additional year at this point. The use is considered permitted use based on the concept thus far. I have not seen any variation to the zoning code that would be required for this development. As you'll see in a moment, the proposed footprint of the building is essentially within the footprint of the existing building. So the main questions at this point are the details of the site, landscaping, et cetera, working out the details of engineering, the appearance of the building itself, and just the general concept that I've asked KBC Advisors to come speak with you about of a speculative two-unit warehouse and office building. So with that, I'd like the KBC Advisors, if you guys could come introduce yourselves and speak about the project.
Good evening, trustees. My name's Ryan O'Leary with KBC Advisors. Thanks for your time tonight. As Andrew, Andrew, can I control the screen with this?
Okay, thank you.
As Andrew pointed out, we're looking at potential redevelopment for 440 North Fairway. The building is located in the Continental Executive Park, which I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with. So the building sits just off Fairway Drive. It is a two-story, 100,000-square-foot office building that, as Andrew said, has been under lease with a corporation that has not occupied the building in five years. So it's been a dark building for five years. That lease is coming up for expiration. We really like the site and its location. The neighbors around this building are industrial in nature. The, directly north is obviously the Glacier Ice Arena, which is more of a commercial use. But obviously, to the east and south of the building is all industrial use in nature. But obviously, to the east and south of the building is all industrial use in nature. So we believe that the proposed concept is in line with what uses are in the business park now. We really like this site for the dimensions that we can build here. The proposal would be for 105,000-square-foot office warehouse building located to be divided into two tenants. Lake County, and specifically in this area, does see demand for smaller uses. We want to design this building to accommodate local companies that need office production and a little bit of warehouse space, and we think this aligns very nicely with that. So this is just a picture of the building, that it is, how it exists today. Dimensions of the site. Need to go through the timeline. This is, this site plan is a little bit outdated. Andrew has the formal landscaping package plan that was submitted in your package. So this is the general layout. We did take time to really consider how we laid this building out with a commercial use to the north. There is a public walkway and bike path that directly abuts the site on the north and connects over to the park on the west side of the site. So we wanted to make sure we faced the high-image office portion of the building towards that. We worked hard to maintain the landscaping that is on site. It's generally fully parked right now with auto parking, surface auto parking, and then the building footprint itself. So we were able to kind of work within those confines, leaving the mature trees on the east, south, and west buffer towards the creek, and then would go over towards the park. This is the elevation for the building. Again, we, it will include glass and precast. It's very much in line with the most recent developments that have been conducted in the park. There is a 50,000-square-foot building located on Lakeview Parkway that was constructed. We partnered with Cornerstone Architects and Premier Construction Design Build, who were also the designers of that facility as well. We are selecting very earth-tone, nature, precast, architectural reveals, awnings, clear-story glass across the top, and then, you know, two very solid entry features for the office occupants for this building. Parking would be located on the north. Truck docks would be located to the south, which would face the industrial building that already has truck docks facing in that direction to the south. The elevation shows like a full buildout of the truck dock area, but we wouldn't anticipate putting all of those in. That's just a sign from here. I guess just a few things that we would point out. I know there was a comment made by one of the trustees about, you know, some vacant off, or vacant industrial space in the market right now, south of the building. Obviously, we are very cognizant of that. We don't want to build a speculative building that wouldn't lease. We are going after a little bit smaller of a tenant base, which we do see demand with, another product we represent in the area. Another, what else I would say on that point is that Lake County overall, from an industrial standpoint, is 5% vacant. So that is below the historical mean. You do have some product here in the, in the municipality that is up and is in the process of leasing up. We're keeping very close eyes on that. 880 Forest Edge was recently leased by a company called Chung Bloom, which is a manufacturer of metal products. And so that building is fully, will be fully occupied, and the Darling Farms assets are actively negotiating leases with several users right now. So our timeline is a little bit longer than that with the tenant that's in the building. This project wouldn't even start until probably March of 2024 at the absolute earliest, and not deliver till the end of '24. So we've got a fairly long way to be able to market to prospective users and clients. We'd much prefer to build it directly for a client or a user that would own it or lease it. And we're actively fielding inquiries already on the building. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Any comments from the trustees?
Questions? Yeah, Trustee Takaoka?
So can you give me an example of the type of businesses you're attracting or going after? You said smaller, I mean, that's kind of vague, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, the, the demand that we believe will be for this park are, are companies that have potentially a little bit higher office percentage or have some production. I can, couldn't list an exact tenant base.
Give me one example of a type of this company. It's kind of general.
Yeah, yeah, I understand it's general. I mean, you know, we're, there's several.
Paper company, you could say a manufacturer who needs office space, I mean?
That, that's all the above, but that's not specific. You're asking for actual companies, right? So?
Just throw me a, just throw me anything.
Sure, sure.
And I'll leave you alone.
Sure. We've, we've already talked and showed the property to a group that manufactures high-end laser products for?
There you go.
Cosmetic, health spas, right? And they would need a, a small distribution area. They would need, you know, an area to do repair and maintenance on high-tech, high-tech stuff. So we believe that it would be more in that range of what we're, we're looking for and seeking.
Other trustee comments? Otherwise, I think you're right, the, it generally fits with what's already there, and the elevations look nice. So what you're looking for is staff?
Yeah, just looking for? General consensus, if there's any feedback that would be useful to them in preparing for technical review in the Planning and Zoning Commission, that would be helpful. We do intend to work with them on just a, not a full traffic study, but just a preliminary analysis of how the proposed building would operate in this area. Obviously, the building's been dark for some time, but in comparison to the call center that most recently was in there, you'd have fewer vehicles, and they would be larger vehicles and coming at different times. So just a preliminary idea of how the traffic would compare. But beyond that, if there's any feedback that the committee would have, that would be helpful to the petitioner.
No, any, I mean, like I said, I like the looks of the building, and it's, it's generally in line with the, the corporate area. Does anybody have any objections to this moving forward with staff?
I, I just wanted to get a second.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there any zoning issues at all?
Thus far, based on the concept, I have not seen any issues with the zoning. No need for variation. It is considered a permitted use. That could, of course, change if they start working with a specific tenant who would require special use. But thus far, there's, there's nothing on this that I've seen that would require any sort of variation or special use.
Well, as a spec building, it fits current?
That's correct.
Current everything in the area, yeah.
Yeah, we've worked with Andrew's team and then our consultants to make sure we're designing within the parameters of the existing zoning and PUD.
But there is the potential with a certain user that there may be some concern.
Understood.
Does our zoning code have any limitations as to the number of truck bays for a given size of building?
Thing I'm aware of, I can double check, but I, I don't think there's anything that would limit it, no.
And again, this is very preliminary, which, is this a good time for you to?
Sure, I think so.
Sure.
If all the comments are completed. For the petitioner, it's important to remember that tonight's approval is not a formal approval by the board. This was your opportunity to get some input as you proceed through technical review. Your plans will be reviewed and vetted by various departments and staff in order to proceed to a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, where the public will actually have a chance to comment as well. A recommendation will be developed that will come before this committee, the whole, ultimately back to the Village Board for final approval. And again, important to note that depending on your final plans, the Village Board may condition its final approval or even withhold its final approval, depending on how the plans come through. So this is very preliminary, a chance to get some input.
Understand, appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Is, is the height of this building the same as the current?
The height of this building is 32 feet. The existing building is probably very close to that with the mechanical units on top or even higher.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to the fun part of the evening. Continuing on with the proposed FY23/24 budget presentation.
Okay, thank you, yes. This will be a continuation of our March 7th Committee of the Whole meeting. We'll be finishing the rest of the proposed fiscal year 24 budget. Just to review our, our timeline real quickly, we are anticipating our public hearing on the budget on April 4th at our next Village Board meeting, and final approval of the fiscal 24 budget at our April 18th meeting. Quick summary again, high level of the village's budgetary funds. And then this evening, we'll be covering the sub-funds and the general fund of the capital improvement and metro parking, also the replacement fund, motorfield tax fund, and the village's three TIF districts. So to kick us off this evening, I will turn things over to Vince Juarez and Kevin Lynn from Kemper Sports to cover the golf course and the golf fund.
Good evening to the members of the board. Good evening, Mayor. Vince Juarez, I'm Vice President of Operations with Kemper Sports. I have been with Kemper Sports for 12 years. I'm a PGA professional, 21 years as a PGA professional. I support Kevin and the operation at Virgin Hills. I also support 14 of our other properties within Illinois, Michigan, Wisconsin, Indiana. So we are here today to give you a overview of the 23, the FY, the FY23 season, talk a little bit about the strategies for FY24, go through a pricing analysis, and then, of course, finish up with the FY24 budget proposal. So golf has changed a lot in the last, I'm going to say, 20 years. Right now, we have 41.1 million total participants in golf. That, that includes both on-course and off-course participants. This is up from 25 million participants back in 2020. A lot of this is, a lot of the growth in 2020, 2021, 2022 is directly related to COVIDs and the expansion of golf through the outdoor activities. Latent demand, so latent demand, when we talk about latent demand, we talk about golfers that want to play the game but have not yet entered the game. Right now, we're at 26 million latent demand players for golf, very, very interested in, in entertainment of the game of golf at 26 million. 21 million participants are interested in green grass golf, green grass golf being golf on the golf course. This is up from 6 million participants back in 2011 and 15 million back in 2018. We look at the different growth segments of golf. Where, where we're seeing a big uptick in the game, we're seeing the biggest uptick in youth and youth participation from the ages of six to 17. It's up 36% in the last three years. This is important because when we look at the Village of Virgin Hills population, I believe that ages 10 through 19 make up approximately 17% of the village. Nationally, on a national level, we look at younger golfers and women golfers and junior golfers being a big, a big uptick. And, and the golfers are enjoying shorter loops, shorter rounds of golf, which makes obviously the nine-hole Muni course perfect for, for growth. So as the industry, what have, what have we learned in the last several years in the industry? COVID has taught us a bunch of different things, but the surge in demand for golf continues to be strong, which really means that we're looking at supply and demand, we're looking at the availability to move prices, we're looking at the availability to increase and really take advantage of, of the demanding golf. So talking a little bit about Virgin Hills as a whole, the Muni as a whole, our property vision is we believe in bringing a top-quality golf course with best-in-class service. Our belief is that happy customers will be loyal customers. I'm not going to go through this entire slide, but our tagline, "There's always been time for nine," is located on the bottom of all of our emails that get distributed to our golfers and the database. Talk a little bit about the FY23 financial overview. I think it's in your, in your packet as well. And on this slide, we included everything from FY18 to current-day FY23 projections. And I think that's important to note, because we look at the growth, we really go back to pre-COVID and right before COVID, FY18 and FY19, to look at those financial results and really compare them to FY23, FY22, et cetera. Green fee, cart fee is up 60% from pre-COVID at $217,864 for greens fees. Cart fee is up 35% from $58,000 to $79,000. And annual passes are projected to be up 7% from, from year, from, from previous historical numbers from FY18. I'll get a little bit into food and beverage as we get further down this, further down the presentation, but overall NOI, net operating income, has improved by 40% from historical numbers. When you look at the average dollar spent per player, you can see that the average dollar spent per player continues to increase in most areas. Greens fees and cart fees going from $9.25 in FY18 to $12.14 in FY23. Additionally, cart fee going from $3.96 to $4.41. F&amp;B has, has continued to take a little bit of a slide, really based on a couple of different things. Number one, some pricing structures, and number two, the, the COVID and, and the banquet side of the operations. We'll talk a little bit about pricing structures as we get into FY24. So key strategies and tactics on the golf side, increased greens fees, both during peak and non-peak, peak times, green fee revenue. That can be done in a couple of different ways, obviously through throughput, but also through pricing structures. Increased cart revenue throughout the season, same thing there, obviously through the number of rounds that we have, through throughput, and also through different pricing structures. And to continue the attraction of permanent tee times, tee time slots, AKA our different leagues that we have at the facility. On the food and beverage side, some key strategies that we have to increase food and beverage revenue while understanding our cost of goods sold. We've met, you know, several times, Kevin and John and, and Tom, to kind of go through our business plan for FY24, talk about our, our cost of goods sold percentage, talk about how we can better align those cost of goods sold percentages throughout the, throughout the business. Offer new items in the restaurant. Kevin is working on the new menu, talking about different prepackaged items and also including a pizza machine in the restaurant for, for use, for, for pizza sales at the golf course. And then, of course, understanding our restaurant and patio space when it comes to events and outside golf, and continuing to market and to promote that. So website, email, and social media, just to talk, I'm not going to go through the entire slide, but to kind of talk about our beliefs on, on marketing. It's to educate, to promote, and to engage. When you talk about social media, you talk about marketing, you want to educate the consumer as to what it is that you're doing, you want to promote the facility, and you certainly want to engage with your customer. So I'll turn over to Kevin for some, for some analysis.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. Looking at this slide, this are kind of our competitors in the area, what their average weekday rate, green fee slash weekend. Something to keep in mind as well, some of these courses that are 18 and 36 holes, they only offer nine holes at certain times, whether it's first thing in the morning, late at night. A lot of those courses, you know, midday on a Saturday or Sunday morning, they're not offered nine holes. Typically play, but they're going to pay the regular rate going forward with that.
Yeah, and these, and these rates do reflect the nine, the nine-hole rate at each one of those facilities.
That's what I was going to say, back where you had the, that $32 for white deer and $32 for pine meadow is nine-hole, not?
Correct.
Yeah.
So if we look at, or to the left, basically, this is what our rates were for the 2022 golf season, ranging from $23 to $26 walking, 33, 36 riding for non-residents. Residents were 18, Monday through Friday, 20 on the weekends, and then if they were riding, 28 during the week and 30 during the weekends. And then we did have some breaks down for seniors and juniors. What we're proposing basically is we're going to bring up green fees a dollar across the board throughout all categories, help us gain some little bit additional income with some expenses such as payroll and just operating expenses. some expenses such as payroll and just operating expenses, rising fertilizer costs, gasoline for mowers and stuff like that. This will help us get to where we need to be as far as from a budget perspective going forward.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I look at your competitive chart, do you really think White Deer customers and Pine Meadow customers come to the Muni?
That's number one, because I don't think they do. Where's the Village Green, the one in Mundaline, where that place seems to be pretty packed? I don't, because my kids play there. I mean, to me, your target market isn't the Pine Meadow guy, or even the Arboretum guy, for that matter, or White Deer guy. I think that your strategy on who you're trying to get to this type of course, I don't see it. I don't get it. Because I, you know, kids, I get the kids for sure, my son, anywhere 14, 15, 16, they'll play the Muni. But anyone who's like serious about golf, quite honestly, aren't going to go to Pine Meadow or White Deer. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
And then also, I wanted to go back to your, like, where you get your data for the number of latent golfers. That's a national thing. Was that a survey?
National Golf Foundation. The National Golf Foundation puts out surveys, surveys all the golf courses and compiles all the different data.
Right. Okay. And I know you'll get to it, but I look at, I know you went to 18, but you know what? If I'm looking at a business, it's just like, I'm not going, that to me is like trying to, I don't know. I see the numbers went down, number one, 22 to 23. You said the NOI, you'll explain that, but I don't know, it seems like businesses... I think your strategy, your targeting, you got to narrow your target market. I think trying to just blast everybody, because again, I know people that play golf avidly, they're not going, the guys that play Arboretum, White Deer, you know, Pine Meadow, they're not going to the Muni. So basically, you're saying it's price-driven. Do you think it's price-driven? You think if you had lower prices, you'd get more volume?
No, I don't necessarily think you'd get more volume at lower prices. I think we have the ability, based on the demand in the industry, to take those prices up. We've raised, the prices have gone up very little over the last...
So what's the Village Green chart?
Several years.
Do you know? Because that's who your competitor is. It's not White Deer.
I am not price-related.
See, that's, I would look at that if I was managing this.
Well, a more comparable would be Willow Hill.
Okay, yeah, Willow Hill.
That's a nine-hole down on, near the Glen, down in that general direction.
You know what I'm talking about?
On the Navy Base.
Right, yeah. There's that. There's the one in Palat, was it Nickel Knolls? Those are the guys I would look at, their business model and who, you know, what kind of business they're doing, not White Deer or Pine Meadow. It's not your, I mean, you manage...
No, but Heather Ridge and Willow Hill are both...
Yeah, not only, not only do I, I manage obviously a ton of golf courses, I play a lot of golf, I play everywhere from Sand Valley to Chambers Bay to Abandoned Dunes. And when I come for, when I try to play a quick nine, when I'm with my wife and my kids, the place I come down to is the Muni. It's a challenging golf course, water comes into play on eight out of nine holes. It's a well-maintained golf course, it's a fun golf course, and when I ask my wife where she wants to play, and I live up in Gurnee, where she wants to play, her answer's always, "Let's go down to the Muni and play the Muni." So I think, you know, when you look at who's playing the golf course, it's 60% non-resident and it's 40% resident. That's the breakdown between resident and non-resident. When you look at the dip in rounds played, because you alluded to it going down, it's gone down everywhere. The average, the average rounds went down 10% in the state of Illinois year over year. That's a known number. But what has gone up over time in the state of, in golf, is the average dollar per player. So rounds have started to take a dip, but they're still above COVID levels. You know, COVID levels were FY20, they're still above COVID levels your rounds, but your average dollar per player has continued to go up. So that's really the reason to increase your greens fees, is to keep that revenue, keeping up with, you know, payroll, operating expenses, et cetera. I don't necessarily disagree with you when it comes to Village Green, and it probably should have been on this list, and it's not.
It's also an 18.
Yeah, it is an 18, yep. I played it twice last year in preparation for high school matches. But, you know, when you look at, when you look at the demographics and you look at the analysis and you look at the folks that are out there playing golf, I do think that we get players from White Deer. Maybe not some of those zero to 10 handicappers, but I do think we get some of those mid-level players that are playing the Muni when the time is right.
Trustee Forster?
I just looked up, oh, sorry. I just looked up Village Green rates, just FYI. The juniors, 15-year-old and under, a nine-hole is as low as $12, and it goes as high as 28 for a walk and ride, pending hours. But the average seems to be around $21 to $24. I would also say on that list that I wouldn't rule out White Deer Run as a fair analysis because I think, given their nine-hole times that they have, some people in the neighborhood would attend Muni instead of White Deer based on timing for a nine-hole. That's one on the list that I would say is not necessarily inappropriate.
Okay, so...
Talking from a strategy and marketing perspective, and I get your whole, my plea Chambers Bay as well, it's not even, the Muni doesn't, it's not, they're not, they're not the same.
They're not in the same...
Strategy, I think, needs to change. Been here almost six years, I've seen the same presentation, I'll be honest with you. I know you weren't here the whole time, but it's just like, the food thing, a pizza maker. So to me, why not buy one of those, you ever see those pizza ovens? You go to ABT and buy, you make them in like three minutes? People, people buy them, the pizza's phenomenal. You could do something like that. I mean, you buy the dough pre-made, you have certain, you only offer a certain amount of pizzas, you don't want to offer everything under the sun. You make that pizza in three minutes.
Well, same as that, that and the hot dog machine. I know, this is almost like deja vu, we had this same conversation last year and still haven't seen the hot dog machine. Yeah, so...
I'm just saying, it just, I would like...
Because the idea of the hot dog machine, as opposed to, we were talking about if it's there and ready, it's one of those things that somebody might grab to take with them because currently you have to fire up the grill and, and nobody's going to wait around that long to get a hot dog to go out and play, so...
Pre-cooked.
Yeah.
Go to Casey's. See those breakfast burritos at Casey's? People actually go in every morning and go in and buy them and eat them. I mean, you could, and I know that they've got some process that they can, you know, that they get this food created quickly. I just think more thought needs to be put into this because I've seen the same thing every year. And it's just like, I mean, look, it's not supposed to be some huge moneymaker, but personally...
I believe that's actually the kind of pizza you're talking about, right? Is that, yeah, yeah.
Pizza maker pizza.
Yeah. Trustee Forster?
Can we pause for one second, sir? Reconnect with the mayor. Can we pause for one second?
Reconnect, definitely.
Oh, okay.
One second, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so going, continuing with our 2023 present strategy.
Excuse me, can I just, can I...
Yeah, Trustee Forster.
I'm sorry. I'll just, two quick questions on the topic of food and beverage. We've talked about this before, the idea of a food and beverage cart. I'm just curious if that has been thought about further as a way to increase some of those sales while they're on the cart. Another idea I thought we talked about was maybe bundles, a package of buying nine holes and bundling with food and beverage or something like that to increase that as well. I'm just wondering if that was thought about at all.
We can definitely look into definitely doing the bundling thing. As far as with the beverage cart, the fact that it's only nine holes, all of our carts do come with coolers where people can keep their beverages cold that they purchase before they go on the golf course. And they also come close to the golf course on AT if they need to run in before it's finishing the last two holes, touch-point wise. As far as beverage cart being driven around the course, it's something that we could look into. I'm not sure pricing on that right now.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly implement the beverage cart if that's, if that's the will. I don't, for a nine-hole facility, you know, from our experience, to Kevin's point, there's coolers on the golf carts, the new carts are coming in with coolers on the golf carts as well. You know, people typically will stock before they go out and have enough, have enough beverages out there for them. The average beverage cart right now is in about the $15,000 range. You know, we could certainly try to lease one if that's the will, but...
What about even just food? I know the course is compact enough that people can go back to the clubhouse and get it, but they're not going, you're going to get more spontaneous purchases if you're in their face.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. I mean, we could certainly, if, we could certainly put a beverage cart out there.
And I'm also saying if beverage is an issue from a price standpoint, leasing maybe food is a better option to get the food in front of people.
On the beverage cart?
Yeah, or just not, not warm food, maybe some kind of, you know...
Chips and candy bars.
I don't know, I'm just, more of the spontaneous, quick purchase. And especially if a lot of the audience is the younger kids, they're going to have a few bucks to buy a candy bar, and it adds up.
Sure, it sure does.
Well, and that's the same point about the ready hot dogs as you come in, yeah.
Okay, so on the left, you can see what our season pass totals pricing was for 2022 golf season. We are proposing increase for fiscal 24 budget, your budget. Basically, we're looking to raise non-resident passes by $100, resident passes by $75, and resident juniors, seniors by $50.
And these passes typically go on sale in March and April for the upcoming season. So this would, you know, pricing strategy on annual passes is certainly something that we would look to get approved as quickly as possible so we could put the passes out for sale for this coming golf season.
How many rounds do you think a non-resident player who has a pass plays a year?
I can say that we had 51 non-resident pass holders and 44 residents, 95 total. And from May 1 until, up until today, they've played 5,055 rounds.
What's the math on that?
So they're playing almost 50 rounds on their pass.
There are 50 rounds on their pass. So you're raising them $100, but you're only charging a dollar more to, if you just walked down and paid it and you didn't have a pass. So your dollar, do you guys look at average dollar spent per player pretty close? And is the reason why is it lower is because of the pass holders, right? So you're only about projecting like a 75 cent increase per player, but that's also because it sounds like you're projecting less players, right? So why don't you guys focus on trying to get more average per player? Dollar may not be enough, is what I'm saying, on the rates, or strategically look at those rates, because you're projecting a loss, right?
Yeah.
So the way I look at it, by 20, call it 2028, you'll be zero or need a cash infusion. Am I correct on that?
You are absolutely correct.
So what are we doing?
Well, we would certainly entertain a higher increase on green fee, cart fee. That would be something we would certainly...
Yeah, but see, that's not the, anybody can do that.
You're going to, there's a price sensitivity that you have to be, that you have to acknowledge. So the question is, why are we projecting loss? I know it's for payroll, it's up quite a bit. Is that, did you bring somebody else on, or is that just typical COLA?
No, no, minimum wage increases and market adjustments.
Okay, all right.
Pricing is easy. You got to come up with some better ideas on how to grow your market. You just showed me data that there's more latent golfers, according to the national survey, but yet you're trying to price, set pricing based upon having less people sign up for a pass. So to me, it's your acquisition is the problem here of new customers, okay? That's where I think you need to focus on. And again, look, you've got 14 locations, Muni's tiny, I get it, but I can't imagine you look at this Muni as a profit center, because it isn't, certainly isn't, obviously.
And I can tell you from personal experience, I get, I get more emails from, and more information about leagues and everything they've got going from Willow Hill than I do from here, and I only play there about once or twice a year, so, not counting the surveys after you've played around. Which, by the way, after your advice last year, I have, I fill out every time now.
Appreciate it.
I mean, honestly, I don't see why, I mean, we can adjust pricing, we don't need someone to manage pricing. Seriously, you got to, you got to have some, you got to have other Munis across the country you could benchmark, or maybe not.
Benchmark for programming?
Programming and how to grow the business, because this is not a good business.
Yeah, I mean, most of, most of the facilities that we have, you know, have full driving ranges, have full practice facilities...
All right, that makes sense. It's really out of your wheelhouse. It's out of your wheelhouse. It is. No?
No. This particular facility...
How many of these types of facilities do you have in the country?
I only deal with the greater Chicago area.
But I know your whole company, how many do you have under management? Could you find that out for me, please?
Sure.
I want you to find out how many Munis you guys manage, and then I would love, and I would love to know how they do on a, how they do, because to me, if I'm running a business, it's just like, well, let's see, there's 100 of them, they do really well in the southeast or the north, or the northeast, why? And then you bring it to the Midwest, but I don't know, maybe that's, I'm thinking about it all wrong.
Yeah, I'll certainly get you the information.
Do you understand, you get what I'm saying?
I get exactly what you're saying.
But see, your answer is, I run the Midwest, it's terrible.
No.
That is not a good answer. It's like, well, I just do the Midwest. You work for Kemper Sports, you're a big company.
Right, but I don't have...
You have a whole list of Munis. That's, it's just...
I don't, I don't, I don't know all the golf, the intricacies of all the golf courses we manage.
See, I would, if I was in your job, that, as an operations guy, that's exactly what I would do, to go to the front of a board, I'd go, "Look, here's what other people are doing, we're going to implement something like this," but that's just me.
I could tell you, you know, the programming that we implement in the Chicagoland market right now, like PGA Hope, which is a veterans program to bring...
I'm not talking about these, I'm talking about Munis. I'm talking about how many Muni types of courses you have in Kemper Sports, that's all I care about. If you have 10 of them, if you have five of them, that's all I care about.
We've got about 60% of our portfolio that are municipal golf courses.
Like this, nine holes?
No, we've got...
Well, that, see, that's, that's what I'm looking for. Fine, I want you to get a list together and get it to them of how many Munis, just like this, nine-hole, no driving range, nothing, and I'd like to know how they do.
Well...
That's it? Okay, that's it. You don't have to say anything, I get what you're saying, believe me, I get it, more than you think.
So talking a little bit about food and beverage pricing here, really looking at beer pricing, mixed drink pricing, non-alcohol pricing, et cetera. We're proposing some increases across the board. What we did was work to establish a couple comparables, or comps, five different comps from local facilities as far as what they charge for their domestic canned beer, their import beer, their drafts, their bottled water, their Gatorade, et cetera. It ranges, you know, your domestic 12-ounce can ranges anywhere from $6 a can to $4 a can. So we're proposing some increases across the board, for instance, on domestic 16-ounce aluminos to go from $4 to $5, from imports, 16-ounce imports from 5 to 6, bottled water from $2 to $3.50, et cetera. These prices haven't been raised in some time, and it is certainly time to continue to raise these. The current pricing that we have, along with the current sell pricing, obviously impacts our cost of goods sold. You know, if we have a beer that we're buying for a dollar and selling it for $2, our costs are going to be X, and we can certainly lower cost of goods sold, increase profitability as we continue to increase the rate of each of these, of these products. Questions on, here is Sona?
How do you guys account for, we call, you know, it's called slippage or inventory loss or variance? What is your variance in your alcohol and food and waste?
Waste is about 2%.
2%?
Yeah.
No, it's not good.
Oh, no, no.
Waste, no. So what about your, your variance on like missing inventory?
We...
Do you put that into waste, or is that under a different line?
It all goes into the waste.
It all goes into the waste?
Mm-hmm.
So how do you guys track when there's... So how do you guys track when there's mishandling of product being passed over the counter and it's not being accounted for or charged for?
Theft.
Okay, so do you have a theft line?
No, we don't.
But it's in the waste line?
Mm-hmm.
Have you ever thought about separating that stuff out?
Uh, we certainly could.
Because I'm assuming you do inventory multiple times a month, especially on alcohol.
We do, we do monthly inventory, end of month inventory.
Do you guys think you're throwing more food out, or more food going over the counter?
Throwing more food out.
On that, that 2%? So that's controls, right?
Mm-hmm.
Does Kemper get an incentive if they, if you guys turn a profit?
We do not. Well, we do get an incentive if we turn a profit, yes.
What does that look like?
Uh, I haven't done that.
Do you get penal, do you get penalized if you don't turn a profit or it's below a certain number?
No.
So there's really no, not a huge incentive to turn a profit?
Well, it's, it's certainly our goal to turn a profit, it's certainly our goal to bring.
I believe it's a percentage on the, on, on profit, and I don't know the number off the top of my head.
It is.
I'm going to ballpark it, I want to say the operating profit had to be about $150,000, and it was a share of the profits at that level. I, I believe the base management fee is about $45,000 a year, without any additions based on profit from the course.
Okay, so it's a man, we pay them a management fee, period.
Correct.
Right, so that comes off.
And then there's a percentage of, and there is, then additionally a percentage of any profit.
Management fee for this course, period.
Right.
To get their 45K a year, I totally get it.
But that doesn't come off, that's not in, in the P and L though, right? The 45,000, is that can be separate, or is that under contractual services then?
It's in the.
Is that contractual services?
It's under.
It's in the.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the operating expenses under our G and A category.
Under the G, okay.
I don't know where it maps to.
Yeah, so it would figure into the P and L.
I mean, I'm guessing if it's 45,000, just by looking at the numbers, it's probably in the contractual services of some sort. What else do you guys have contractual services for? I got it, never mind, I see it.
So when you, when you boil down the price increases, you boil down the rate increases on food and beverage, annual pass increases, we're anticipating to do 18,509 rounds in FY '24, up from 17,948, giving greens fee, grade fee revenue of 232,000 and change, cart fee revenue of 91,000 and change, for total revenue up from 363 in FY '23 to 398 in FY ' '24. The F and B line item is the big, is the big uptick. Those pricing increases, if we would have implemented those pricing increases in FY ' '23, it would have been a $10,000 bump automatically. We did the calculations to say those, you know, the dollar on the beer, the $2 on the water, et cetera, would have been 10, 10K. F and B going to 87,000. We do have payroll in at 296, up from 265, that's minimum wage increases and market adjustments, and the operating expenses going from 172 to 200,000. We've seen increases in fertilizers and chemicals, repair and maintenance of the building, and of course, our utilities continue to go up as well. So break it all down, it, it boils down to an NOI of a negative 47,000.
I've been here six years, so it hasn't changed. I'll be honest with you, I've seen the same. And it's the same results, so. Guess I would just look at it a little differently. I would like you to find out if there's any muni like us who actually makes a dollar profit.
So now, do we budget over the next three years for a cash infusion that might be needed to keep the course running? I mean.
Yeah, I believe historically, every so often, the village, the general fund will contribute to the golf fund to, to keep it in the black. But, but I think, if I could add, just in hearing this, this conversation this evening, I think what, what might be helpful for, for staff, for Tom and I still being relatively new, or Tom being very new, and for, for staff to work with Kemper on, you know, the future of the course and what it is that the village board would like to see, I, I think will help guide us in how we approach investing in, in operations, investing in food and beverage enhancements, how we approach pricing for food and beverage, how we approach pricing schemes for daily passes, annual passes, is an understanding of the philosophy of what the muni is. In other words, is the muni for, for the village a service that every so often is subsidized by the general fund? Or do we want to create the muni as a standalone enterprise business? If the direction is we want the muni to be a standalone enterprise business, I believe Vince and his team then can adapt the appropriate business model to make it a profitable course. If we want to say, well, we want to keep rates reasonable for our residents, it's okay if every few years the general fund has to subsidize it, they can operate it that way as well. So to help us maybe for next year and, and preparing for how we want to make decisions and come up with a, a marketing and enhancement plan, having that philosophy I think is going to be really valuable to us.
Totally agree. You can frame it like that, okay, for sure. You have to decide what it is. Okay, fair enough.
And I can say, not, not operating a golf course, but.
No, no, no.
Operating in a swimming pool in the past.
Correct.
They're subsidized, so, but the way the.
It'll be an amenity for the village.
Right, and so there's no wrong answer, it's just, depending on the answer is going to depend on how we approach pricing, how we approach investing in all those things.
Trustee Forster.
First of all, I echo what Craig just said, thank you Kevin, that was a great.
Very good.
Synopsis. Um, the simulator, is that not on here for a reason?
I'm sorry?
The simulator is absorbed into the green fee line item, it's, there was no revenue budgeted for, for this fiscal year because of, if we weren't sure if it was going to be operational this fiscal year.
Okay, because I thought last year it was separated out, I thought, so, I may, I might be remembering that incorrectly, but I thought it was, so I didn't.
Well, I would say, just anecdotally, that the revenue's got to be up on that, because I've seen it in significantly more use than last year.
And it's just a flat fee to use it at the hourly rate?
Correct.
And again, is there any thoughts of doing bundling packages, frequency passes?
That was again where the pizza idea came up, but that was.
But I, last year we talked about.
Yes.
Bundling, and we were going to try to enhance the package with that, and has any of that happened, or is it still just flat fees?
Go ahead.
It is flat fees, we did reduce our fees from last year, because we felt that the market spoke that they weren't willing to pay that, so we did drop our rates for the simulator to try to get some more use, which has helped, and we have made some more money in green fees through the simulator. It's also helped our food and beverage numbers throughout the winter, as those were up in January and February, and basically in March now, based on that, people coming in and drinking, sitting.
That was, my next question is, is that, is that, the kitchen always open when the simulator's always open?
Yes.
Well, I thought it was the.
No bundle, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I thought, I thought the, I thought the simulator was being moved because of the noise issue, or somebody whacking a ball into a screen, you know? Yes, if you're into that, that's great, but I mean, if everybody comes in there enjoying the year and that whack.
Well, it's, it's generally not operated when there's a, a party going on or something, that gets folded up partway, and, and not operated, and when it is being operated, basically the only people there are the people that are, you know, part of the group that's hitting.
But you can't argue the fact, it kind of dominates.
Well, with what it's at now, I'd.
You know, I mean, how many parties can we, can we lose or add if that wasn't there? It would sp, 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 the revenue.
Yeah, it would, it would be helpful if you did separate it out again in the future to.
Yeah.
Notice how much is green fee versus?
I think I broke it out on a separate tab, or separate table last year for, to show the simulator green fee and, and normal green fee, we certainly have that information, but I condensed it for the purpose of this budget. This is a summary budget, we've got, you know, 200 pages of different information that have, has each GL line item broken out, and, you know, certainly happy to provide that.
It is 2022 golf simulator, 1,600, 1,648 in sales. Is that what you're talking about? Where it's broken out?
I think you go, you guys lump things into, yes.
Yeah.
If that's the budget you're looking at?
Well, that was the actual 2022, so, and then the budget is 405. So that's the only thing that's broken out for simulator that we have.
I got one question. Who's writing the question? I was.
Your bike's off.
Oh, it is. So from a pass perspective, could someone buy a family pass? Is there such a thing? So why not do some, because maybe more than, like you said, a husband and a kid, or two people have a family pass where it could be interchangeable? Doesn't have to, could just be under like shank family, two, two different passes and...
We do have an add-on, son, daughter, husband, wife.
Right, I would do it upfront.
To, to do that?
I get the add-on, do it upfront.
It is a little bit reduced rate, I think it's $50 that they save if they add somebody else onto that pass. We don't have a lump family pass where mom, dad, and up to three kids. But you can add, a husband and wife can get a pass, and the wife's pass is going to be a little bit cheaper than what the husband's pass was, because they're.
Right.
Living in the same household.
Well, why don't, why don't you try this and do it upfront? Instead of 1,200, you get it for 1,000, and it gets two members of the family, and you can sell it upfront. Do you see what I'm saying? I'm just trying to throw.
Well, you're significantly reducing your, your amount per round then.
Maybe inclines them to buy a two, for two people, I don't know, I'm just throwing the concept out there, I didn't, I don't have the numbers figured out. You know what I'm saying? Get it upfront.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a good concept.
Try, right?
Yeah.
900 for two people, and then you get it for 450 if you break out the math, maybe get more people.
Well, again, that would reduce your, your amount per round.
If you're looking at a finite number of people.
Well, but no, I mean, you're talking.
Trying to get more.
You're talking about a, like, like a seven-day pass that's now going to be going up to 830 if you increase that to 1,000, and they do the 50 rounds, you're, you're, you're knocking at least $2 to $3 off of your amount per round.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying, I'm trying to get more people to join.
Yeah.
You got 100, I'm trying to get 105, but you see what I mean? I get what you're saying.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to go back to the simulator, hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Have we ever taken it down like it was presented to us originally? In other words, could you take it down for, something's hard.
Roger, I think it's, Mayor, it's four, it's probably four, over four hours to take it down completely, more than that. But we, we could send you some pictures, Mayor, of the, of, Kevin took some pictures of a recent party with it folded up, and, and this, this winter, the, we haven't had that many parties, but the parties we've had have been able to work around it without a problem.
Okay.
We haven't, let's put it, have, have you had anybody say, no, I'm not going to book a party here because of the simulator? I don't?
No, I have not.
Okay. And in fact, we, the simulator was used for the super party.
But they just tell you I'll get back to it.
I don't know. Don't know. Let's move forward. Okay, all right.
All right, we ready to continue?
Yes.
Thank you Vince, thank you Kevin.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, moving forward, we're going to cover the remaining sub-funds, replacement fund, motor fuel tax, and the TIF funds. Starting out with the capital fund first, I would like to direct your attention to the two columns on the far right, presented draft budget, which agrees to what was in the draft budget book, that, that the board received, and then the adjusted budget, draft budget, this column includes any adjustments that have been, that have occurred since the draft budget book was distributed. You will see the same format in the other funds later in the presentation. Starting at the top of the draft budget columns, the budget revenues are generated from road and bridge taxes, lease revenue generated from the turf field, as well as investment income. Moving down to the expenditures, the proposed budget includes planned capital outlay of $2.6 million. This is an increase of the $50,000 over the presented, what was presented in the draft budget book. This $50,000 was moved from the public works operating budget in the general fund to the capital fund. This was due to a paper project in the current year that, not receiving any bids, so these funds were moved to the capital fund to increase sidewalk and curb, curb work. I will show a further breakdown of these planned expenditures on the next slide. Not done yet. Staying on the capital outlay line, but moving left to review the fiscal '23 budget versus projected actual. The projected actual is $1.2 million less than was budgeted. This is largely due to a few projects. The CV ditch DCO grant match project at 250,000 moved to the fiscal '24 budget. Half of the cost of the new boiler at the communication center was also moved to the fiscal '24 budget. The Harvey Lake Bridge construction project was performed substantially in-house, saving approximately 140,000, and other facility rehabs and renovation projects that were performed in-house, or, or not needed in the year, generated additional savings. As shown on this slide, the revenues are not adequate to fund all the planned projects, so fund, this fund relies on significant transfers in from the general fund. The draft fiscal '24 budget includes a transfer in from the general fund of 1.5 million dollars. The fund's projected to end the year with a 1.6 million dollar fund balance. Okay, this slide displays a breakdown of the planned capital projects by category. The projects are included in your draft budget book and the five-year CIP plan, and can be found on pages 116 to 119. You have seen these projects before, staff has presented the capital improvement plan at the committee of whole meeting last December for board review. Director Vanetta will walk, will be walking through the parking lot, pavement rehab, and Lake Charles DCO grant projects on the following slides. Before, before we move forward with that, just wanted to take a moment to see if there's any questions or comments from the board regarding any of the planned capital projects.
Comment your questions from the board?
Hearing done, I'll turn it over to Director Vanetta.
Thank you, we, we wanted to highlight two of the bigger projects that are in the capital budget this year. The first one being the parking lot pavement rehabilitation, this was approved on the agenda earlier tonight. You'll see there's three locations for this project. The first one on the left is the public works parking lot, it includes the parking lot out front, as well as the pavement area around the fuel island and, and up to the gate that goes in the backyard. The other two locations on the right, you'll see is the Arbor Theater in the north, this is the old section, the northern part of that parking lot, as well as the, the lots, the V hack, including Nike Parkway. This project includes the resurfacing of these lots, and some minor curb work, minor concrete work, and striping. The project's planned to get started in the, the end of May, and it'll take about four to five weeks. The next project we wanted to highlight is the CV ditch restoration project. So this is working, the village is working in conjunction with the Stormwater Management Commission and the Vernon Hills Park District. The SMC is the lead agency on this project right now, and they're leading the, the concept design. SMC received ARPA funds that are used to make improvements throughout the region, so this project was selected. The issue we're having is the CV ditch is becoming. issue we're having is the CV ditch is becoming severely eroded. The banks are falling apart and sending sediment down into Lake Charles, which is creating a delta on the north side. So, this project will include the restoration of the CV ditch banks, as well as the sediment removal, the dredging on the north side of Lake Charles, and some other ancillary improvements in this drainage system. So, this is in concept design this year, being funded by the SMC, but the village is committed to putting a grant match to the DCO funds of 250,000. If anyone has any questions.
Really quick on the V hack parking lot, end of May, four to five weeks. Is that the best, is, is there going to be parking available during that process in those areas?
So, I know that we're working with the park district and some of the other users to make sure that that timeframe works. You're usually, when you're doing a parking lot project like this or a resurfacing project, we're only working, when you, you come through and you'll mill up the pavement, you're still able to get in and out in the evenings. It won't be shutting down the entire area for the whole duration of the project. There's only going to be limited areas that are going to be permanently closed off for some material staging or where they have to do some deeper patches or anything like that.
Other comments or questions from the board?
Okay. Thank you. Metro parking, all the quick facts listed here have not changed since the prior year, except for the number of trains scheduled per day. There are now seven trains scheduled per weekday, up from four last year. There's no weekend train service on the north central line. Looking at some data here, I'd like to direct your attention to the blue box on the left. This data gives some context of the commuter activity pre and post pandemic. Pre-pandemic, the lot was averaging $55,000 per year in parking fees and 121 spots used per day. During the heart of the pandemic, the use of the lot was nearly wiped out at three spots per day. Moving to the fiscal year 22, the activity increased to 15% of pre-pandemic levels. And if the first eight months of the fiscal year 23 were annualized, the commuter activity has increased roughly to 30% of the pre-pandemic levels. If you move your, if, if you look at the box on the right, the metro pass fees, which provides a commuter two months of lot access, the pass activity has increased at a much slower rate than the parking fees during the recovery. This is a signal for us that shows us how the needs of a commuter has changed. This, the increase in remote and hybrid working arrangements since the pandemic has reduced the demand for buying two-month passes at a time, as well as overall demand for the train service.
So, in the coming year, staff is going to be looking into a couple of things. First and foremost, it, it's clear that the revenues coming from the metro are really not even sufficient to pay a fraction of the cost of, of operating the parking lot and the, and the station facility. One thing that we're potentially looking at is, do we see the trajectory of that changing in the, in the future and the potential of just bringing the metro fund into the general fund, considering that there's going to continue to be subsidies for the foreseeable future? The other thing and kind of piggybacking on the, the golf course conversation is, are there different ways we can look at the rate structures and fee structures for the, for the parking lot? So, for example, instead of purchasing a, a two-month pass, you could see those are down significantly from where they were in the heyday of the, of the metro parking usage. Maybe there's a punch card option or some other, some other different structure or way that we can create that so that it's more conducive to the, the typical commuter these days. I, I don't think we're seeing too many five-day-a-week, four, four-week-a-year or four-week-a-month commuters anymore. It's probably, I'm only going into the office a few days a week. And so, maybe there's a way, instead of having to sink your cost into a pass, you're not going to get the, the best bang for your buck out of some other alternative. So, we're going to look into that in the coming year and, and either later this fall or this time next year with the budget, bring, bring some new options for consideration.
Also, Peter, you can see if this three-year rebuild project on the Kennedy will have any effect on potential.
Yeah, great point.
Yeah, I mean, that started and it's, and it's going to be a significant project over at least the next two to three years.
We've got a mobile app.
We do.
And what are the options for purchasing on the, on the mobile app? Is it still either just same day or the two-month pass or do we have other?
That's a good question. I know definitely same-day passing. I'm not sure if the, the two-month pass is available through the app or not. I, I don't have the answer to that.
And that's an out, we, we didn't develop that app. It's an outside company.
Correct. So, we pay a fee for that. I want to say, Mr., or Tom, was that about 9,000 a year, give or take?
Yeah, approximately.
Well, I, I think your idea of some sort of a more flexible structure is a good idea to take a look at because of the fact of exactly what you pointed out, that it's, it's no longer a, and doesn't look like in the foreseeable future, we're ever going back to a five-day-a-week.
Correct.
I was going to suggest go to the app itself, the, the app developer and see what, they probably already have that built in.
Oh, sure. And certainly serving other communities. We're not the only municipality experiencing this, so.
Other options. So, like you said, either do a punch card system, if you do it that way, a certain discount, or if you do a three-days-out-of-the-week pass, give them the option for that at a certain discount.
Trustee Horster?
We used to have the farmer's market there, or French market, they called it.
French market.
Did that funds, that was before you, I think, but would something like that support this budget?
It'd do well.
Pardon me?
I don't remember.
I understand that. I'm just, it.
I don't, I don't believe that any revenues from that, if there were, would go to the metro fund. Those would be simply just using the metro parking lot for a general fund special event.
Okay.
What, what would be the advantage? You'd mentioned possibility of combining the funds. Why, why do that?
Well, traditionally, when you have an enterprise fund like the, the metro fund, generally speaking, it's a break-even fund. And actually, when you look back at the data, it, it was pretty break-even. We were, the revenue coming in from the parking fees were, for the most part, covering the operating expenses for the, the station and the parking field. If, if we're just every year going to have to continue to transfer money from the general fund to the metro fund, rather than go through that annual exercise, we could still track the operating expenses and revenues separately, but just have them under the general fund umbrella to avoid the accounting back and forth.
As long, as long as we get that data, how much money we're.
Correct.
Losing or spending on that, then.
Tom might have a better accounting way to say that than I just did, but that's, that's the gist of it.
Yeah, it all really comes down to the direction that the board would like to go on this and the golf course and to identify how we're going to report it. So, whether it's going to be a consistent subsidy or a set subsidy, we can show that in the accounting or if we want to try to.
The advantage of, of keeping it separate is then we do have this exercise. Like if the golf were combined into the general fund, then trustee Takahoka wouldn't have had the opportunity to, to speak his thoughts so fully. If, you know, if it were just a, oh, by the way, here's the line of, of, of how much we're losing every year for the last 15 years. So, that's the advantage of.
No, there, either option, there's still the ability to track the data for the, for the service or the program, so.
I get the idea of tracking the data, but forcing us to go through this exercise for.
Oh, I, I see.
For significant loss each year. Thank you.
Okay. Just to summarize the metro parking overall, the proposed revenues are 21,000 and the proposed budget expenditures for the fiscal 24 year are 90,000. Again, as we just mentioned, the general fund makes up the, any revenue shortfalls here. So, that concludes the metro. Does anyone have any questions, comments on that further?
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
Okay, hearing none?
That was a good comment.
I said, I'm glad we didn't build a bathroom. Yeah.
Trustee Takahoka would like more pickleball courts on the metro lot, so. Or a driving range for the golf course. We can make it a driving range.
How about on the train itself?
Or community pool.
We'll see what we can do.
I was just waiting for you to, to ask the gentleman who's, who's converting that building, you know, how much it would cost to, to, to buy it for pickleball. All right, sorry, we digress.
All right. Moving on, looking at the replacement fund now. Okay, looking at the adjusted draft budget on the far right column, contribution revenues are funded by the village departments who use vehicles and equipment purchased by this fund. Planned equipment expense in the proposed budget is 1.3 million, an increase of $230,000 over what was presented in the draft budget book. This increase is due to several vehicles being moved into the fiscal 24 budget that were initially budgeted in fiscal 23. A quick note on accounting to explain this a little further. So, we report the purchase of a vehicle or equipment when we receive and place that vehicle or equipment into service. For example, if we budget to purchase a vehicle in fiscal 23, but don't receive and place that vehicle in service until fiscal 24, the related purchase will be reported in the fiscal 24 column. Due to continued delivery time lags, this has pushed several vehicles from 23 to fiscal 24 proposed budget, as I'll show in further detail here in a second. Lastly, this expense increase will result in a lower net position at year-end of approximately 1.7 million.
Why the 300,000, 230,000 or so increase in the equipment?
So, there.
Just from a few weeks ago?
Yeah. So, there, there is vehicles still on order that we weren't sure we were going to get by the time the draft budget was presented. So, or when the book was distributed. So, since then, we've identified that we're not going to receive these vehicles and it just pushes them over. Now, the important point to make there is the cash is still available in this fund for this purchase. It just moves the actual purchase into the next fiscal year. So, it's not, it's just kind of a timing of where we recognize that expense.
So, in our review of the operating budget last meeting, each department, every year, makes a contribution from their operating budget to the replacement fund. So, what Tom is saying is, we still make that contribution whether we make the actual purchase of the vehicle. So, the cash, so whether we purchase it in 23 or 24, the cash has already been transferred over. So, we're not, we're not out anything from a, from a cash perspective. There's no fundamental difference one year to the next because we've already made the transfer.
And if you look on the far right column here, again, the 1.3 million, it's, you know, a doubling of the prior year, if not more. It's just accumulation of those vehicles with the time lag on when we're going to receive them. The lag is still currently in effect. Haven't seen any reduction of that too much. So, we may be in a situation like this again next year where a lot of the budgeted vehicles are rolling to the next year.
So, did, did the projected actual number go down by that same amount or?
So, the projected actual number went down for the 325,000, but what increased it was several vehicles that were purchased in the year that were budgeted in fiscal 22. And I'm actually going to go through the detail of those by, by department here in the next couple of slides.
I'm just saying that, I mean, we just got, I'm, I'm looking at the original copy of the book on, on my computer that you sent. So, I only see the 108.3 on the computer and then I see on the screen 1319. So, you're saying that's something that would have been spent for 23 fiscal years now going to be spent 24 fiscal year, but you would expect the number for the 23 fiscal year to go down by the same amount. You're just pushing it back a year. So.
Yep.
So, I, I just don't see that.
So, in the book, the, the projected fiscal 23 actual was 325,000. Those vehicles actually moved to the fiscal 24 budget. What took their place in this 437,000 you're seeing are several vehicles that we purchased in fiscal 23 that were from the 22 budget.
But, but that should have already been in the book, right?
That's correct, but it was not.
Okay.
I've added those now and I'm going to, I'm going to talk through those here. Okay, break, so breaking down public works here, if we look at these three columns of numbers, fiscal 23 budget in the far left, projected actual in the middle, and then the draft 24 budget on the right. The two trucks that were budgeted in fiscal 23 were moved to fiscal 24 as we're not receiving delivery of those vehicles until at least May. And then if you look at fiscal 23 column, projected actual in the middle, there's five or six items there that were included in the fiscal 22 budget, which we received and, and put into place in fiscal 23. Now, there's still, there's still some work being done on the F-550 trucks to finalize those, which we're anticipating to be done by April. So, those are still, it's just, the timing lag was extensive here. So, I didn't capture some of those vehicles early on because I wasn't necessarily aware of them. I wasn't looking at the fiscal 22 budget. So, I have updated that here. And then the fiscal 24 draft budget adjusted up 203,000 after receiving these updated pricing and additional timing delays I discussed. Moving to police. One of the four budgeted police vehicles from fiscal 23 was purchased, the, the admin vehicle there for 41,000. The remaining three patrols, we're not going to receive again until after fiscal 3 is completed. So, those have been moved to the fiscal 24 budget, making the fiscal 24 budget include seven patrol, or six patrol cars and one CSO vehicle, in addition to the patrol vehicle modifications for $60,000. And then the last line there, community development, we had budgeted a hybrid escape vehicle in fiscal 23. Again, that will not be purchased in fiscal 23. We've moved a placeholder to the fiscal 24 budget as needed.
I can further comment on that one. So, if you recall from this past year, one of the things that the village has been looking at is how can we advance some of our operations to a, a green infrastructure, a green fleet. We participated early on in the Vernon Township Energy Resiliency Commission and as part of that, we had a, a free consultation by an energy consultant. And one of the, what I'll call low-hanging fruits for us from a fleet standpoint was in our community development department. It's really the most basic vehicle that we have. It's, it's a normal vehicle that there's comparable EV options out on the market. What we don't currently have is a charging infrastructure to, to accommodate that. So, just as a temporary placeholder, we have the $30,000 in, in case our plan doesn't work out. But what we're looking to do in this coming year is probably repurpose a recycled vehicle that's being taken offline from some other department, use that as a stopgap in our community development department until we can plan appropriately for bringing on an EV vehicle into our fleet. So, it might not be done in this coming fiscal year, but of any operating area in the village, this is our easiest opportunity to bring in an EV vehicle to our fleet. So, we wanted to make sure we didn't purchase a brand-new vehicle and then extend that opportunity another five or six years.
And that wraps up the replacement fund. If there's any comments or questions on that, take it right now.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, moving on.
No.
Mayor? No? Okay.
All right. Moving on to motor fuel tax fund. Again, the proposed expenditure budget up 22% from the prior year and the revenues up 30% from the prior year. Looking at the revenues a little bit here, if you direct your attention to the red arrow, the grants line, this year's budget includes 995,000 of grants. This includes two grants for the Lakeview Parkway project, one $500,000 DCO grant, as well as a $495,000 STP grant, all related to the Lakeview project. Moving down to capital outlay there, the 3,23,000, this is the expenditure budget for the Lakeview Parkway project in its entirety for this year. This is an increase from the presented draft budget in the book due to actual bid results coming in at $373,000 higher. And this ends the projected, projected fund balance at year-end is $825,000. And I'm going to turn it over to Director Vanetta to cover the Lakeview Parkway project further.
We just wanted to give a, a couple of quick highlights on the Lakeview Parkway project. So, as many of you know, this project's been in design for many years now. This project will be administered by IDOT. Because of the federal funds we receive, we follow a federal aid process. The, the improvements for this project start up at Center Drive and go down Lakeview Parkway all the way to Fairway, Fairway Drive with resurfacing throughout the whole limits. The main meat and potatoes of the project is the, the resurfacing and widening between Phillips Road and Hawthorne Parkway. As you can see, there's also going to be a reconstructed bike path, new sidewalk. As you can see, there's also going to be a reconstructed bike path, new sidewalk, upgraded LEDs, a new traffic signal, and then there'll be increased traffic capacity and efficiency at that intersection of Town Line and Lakeview Parkway. What, what I mean by that specifically, the cross-section of the, the upcoming project will be if you're on Lakeview Parkway heading towards Town Line in either direction today, you know, there's two left-turn lanes and one straight, shared straight and right-turn lane. That's going to be, we're going to be adding an additional lane, so now they'll, they'll still have the two left-turn lanes and then two through lanes as well.
Is, is, are, has there been any thought given to either of those two lanes, knowing the traffic in this area, the two far outside lanes being right-turn only?
So the, the far outside lane, this, this exhibits slightly misleading because the through arrow there should be a through and, and a right. It'll be a shared straight and right turn. As far as I understand, that the, the consultant in the studies we did on this didn't see a need to have a dedicated right-turn lane.
Well, the reason I ask is because I, I was hoping that was one of the improvements here, because I've seen it many times, northbound in that straight lane, and a line behind you waiting to turn right. If we could maybe have a, you know, traffic people look at, you know, the consultant look back and, and just do some, some counts for that there, because it would seem to me that it would make more sense, especially the northbound, to have one straight and one dedicated right.
I could certainly get that information from them and-
And that's just anecdotal, so, you know, I mean-
Right.
Kind of, you know, I, you see it too, that backs up that one lane, but now with two lanes going forward, that long line is going to be half-
But all you need is one car in that far-right lane.
I know, I know, like how it is now.
That's going straight.
But Josh, you have, you're probably going to have half as, the lines should be half as long now, but still, it would be, yeah, that right turn lane does-
Yeah, all you need is one car up by the light going straight.
Well, the same thing going south from-
Correct.
From further north.
Yeah.
One car that's going straight and blocks a whole people, everyone trying to turn west.
Yeah. So I would like to have that checked.
Sir, so, so for projects like this, there's an extensive intersection design study that's done with IDOT in the early phase. I, I obviously wasn't here during that time when this happened, so I can, I can get that information that was done and the reasoning of why the layout is the way it is today. Bring that back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a, a highlight, there's going to be an open house for this project.
Yeah, we're, he was just commenting, we're, we kind of missed the boat on that one, I think. Yeah, yeah.
I can bring you the, the information, though, that, how they got to-
Well, no, because, the reason I'm asking is because originally that is, is what I remember was discussed at the very initial, when this project was first getting going. The, one of the points of adding, you know, the land acquisition and expanding the right-of-way was, that was the initial project was to dedicate a right-turn lane. I do, I do remember that pretty-
In both directions, dedicated right turn.
Yeah, that it would be now be two lefts, a straight and a right, both north and southbound. That, that was, at least that's how I'm remembering it. Mike, you-
Maybe, or maybe.
I-
Can always ask, is it not changing, is that changing the, uh?
Not changing the lanes themselves, it's just how they're mapped in the light. Similarly, coming-
That's my recollection, going back to when this project was just first brought up, so.
Coming from, from further north going south, where it's Hawthorne, Hawthorne Parkway there. There's always one car that's trying to go straight, and everyone's trying to turn west, go toward the schools, and, and they have to wait for, for that one car.
I'll get you an update on that.
Well, because I would think, I, I really would think the counts of people turning to go east on 60 might even be higher than the count of the people going north.
You're talking Lakeview and Town Line here, right?
Right.
Well, are you, what about the traffic going this way? I mean, if, if there's a lot of traffic going this way, you're not making that right.
I, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, I, I think that, I'm just thinking that it's, that, that was one of the initial thoughts on this. And I would, I would think that if you did a count there, the number of cars that would be turning east on 60 would be a significant amount, but, you know.
In going either.
So this, the, the project's expected to, to get started towards the mid, end of May. Like I mentioned, we are going to have an open house on April 18th from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Sullivan Center. So there's, there's communications on the, the village's website. There's also a specific project website for this project that you can get linked to through the village's homepage.
Someone said why all the trees cut down.
Yeah, so we, we did have to take some advanced tree removal. IDOT has a restriction on removing any trees on their projects after April 1st, so they all-
Yes.
Because of the northern long-eared bat, yeah. So all, all the trees had to be removed in advance of, of the project.
Does make that view significantly different when you pull out a target.
So, um-
Comments, a lot of comments made, why did they take all the trees down?
Yeah, there's a, a requirement to, to not remove any trees during the summer because the northern long-eared bat can nest in trees, and it's to not disturb their habitat.
The northern long-eared bat?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
The project's expected to run through the end of the year with some,
Traffic.
Potentially some planting, some landscaping and final tree replacement in spring of 2024. So as far as the funding goes, it's, it's a little somewhat unique because the project's administered by IDOT. So if you look on this chart in the, the column on the left under Village, this shows the total on this, the 3,23,375 is the total amount of money that's budgeted in this, in this budget year for this project. But of that, included in that number is the STP grant that the village will be reimbursed for, as well as the DCEO grant that will be reimbursed for. So after the project is complete and all the reimbursements are finished, the village is really on the hook for 2,27,752 dollars for this project.
Who writes the check to the contractors, IDOT, and then we pay IDOT?
So for the construction, IDOT writes the check to the contractor, and then they invoice us for the funding. For the engineering, it's flip-flopped. The village writes the check to the engineer, and then we invoice IDOT to get the reimbursement. That's why that 495 for the STP grant is for the engineering funds that we have to pay upfront and then invoice IDOT for.
And IDOT is then going to be responsible for keeping it on time and on budget, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If you'll notice on the far right side from the draft budget, you can see what the engineering and construction costs were, the 2,650,000. We opened bids two Fridays ago, and they came in higher than expected. So that's where you're seeing the adjustment of 373,000, which is in the, the adjusted draft budget for 2024. Does anyone have any other questions?
373 over, what period of time was that previously, that number previously developed?
I believe the final cost estimate would have been done to the end of last year. All the bid prices this year so far have been coming in high. We've, we've had seen price increases on our, our concrete and our, some of our other projects. And I know it's, it's a regional thing, so this might be some higher construction prices for here to stay.
Are you saying that's just in the last few months from when we developed those numbers?
Yeah, so from the engineer's estimate, which would have been based on bid prices that they've seen last year and the year before, we have seen these numbers trending up. Even IDOT has a cost index of asphalt prices, which are much higher over the last several months than they were even a year ago.
Most projects are bid between January and middle of the year. So to, to what Director Venata was saying, our engineers' prices were based on 2022 bids a year ago.
This project took a little bit longer, if I'm correct, to, to finalize it, due to some land situations.
Our original bid letting was supposed to be in January, I believe, and we had a, a delay in our final land acquisition, which pushed our bid letting to March.
So that, that negotiation might have cost us this amount potentially. We don't know what the number would have been in January, but-
Good news is we have the funds, and we will get it done this year, and we'll even look about getting a pickleball court in one of those right lanes and be good to go.
Good idea. That we can control. That at least we have some control over.
Be a new game called Dodge Pickleball, yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments on this?
Okay, I can bring us home here. Last, last section. This slide you saw two weeks ago at our summary, our overview of our village's debt, this is focusing strictly on the def, debt associated with our, our three TIF districts. All of the TIF district debt that we have is self-supporting, which means that our annual increment is sufficient to cover the annual debt service payments. Overall, we have outstanding debt of about 23.2 million dollars for all three of our TIFs as of May 1 of '23. And our total budgeted debt service payments for the upcoming fiscal year are approximately 3.1 million dollars. The first TIF we'll review is our Vernon Hills Town Center TIF. It's at the southern end of Vernon Hills at the intersection of 45 and 21. This is the village's oldest TIF district. It was designated back in 2002. In 2002, the frozen base EAV was just over 2 million dollars. And currently, today, the estimated 2023 EAV is about 26.2 million dollars. So that's a growth of about 24.2 million dollars over the life of the TIF. This TIF is anticipated to close in 2025. That's the 23-year mark for the TIF district, with the remaining debt to be paid in 2026, and the taxing bodies expecting to receive their new increment in tax in 2027, based on the 2026 tax year. Overall outstanding debt as of May 1, 2023 for the Vernon Hills Town Center TIF is 5.9 million dollars. Just a financial snapshot for the, yes, sir?
What was the original dollar amount on the TIF?
The frozen EAV was 2,44,972.
No, I mean, what, okay, what did we find out? What dollar?
Oh, the original total debt? The orig, yes, the original, correct, yeah. So the, there were three, three series of bonds. I'll go back to that slide so we can see it. So you can see here, the top three were for the, the Town Center TIF. So the original issue were 7.8 million, just under a million dollars, and 5.2 million.
Okay, which holds out the what?
14, 1.
About 14 million dollars.
Yeah, a little over 14, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. That'd be nice in that, so.
Okay, so for the draft '24 budget, we are expecting, or anticipating approximately 2.1 million dollars in increment for the TIF. This was covered two weeks ago, a change to the accounting of the general fund's expense to each TIF fund. So you'll see new there, the payment in lieu of taxes, which is 10% of the anticipated increment for the year. And then also what we covered two weeks ago is because of the rise in interest rates, we're seeing a much higher return on our interest income. So the 87,000 is reflective of that. The only other item of note on here that I'll touch on is the capital outlay of 300,000. If you recall, back in December of '21, the Lot 4 parcel in the Town Center TIF was donated to the village. Since then, our Public Works Department has worked to remove the dilapidated parking lot and planted grass and seed there. It's starting to, to grow now. Also, our Public Works team is working on designing some concepts for further board review later this year for somewhat of a passive park or, or open space concept for that, for that lot. So we have here marked 300,000 for an eventual project, if the board would like to move forward with that.
Kevin, I just have to say, remember, I called you to tell you I saw some people with some picnic chairs sitting there?
Okay.
And they pulled them out of their trunk, and they were sitting there eating pizza or something there, and I was like, hey, gazebo. But, I know, we talked about that, I just-
I didn't think there was that much grass yet, but, uh-
That's right. We can have an RV park.
You know what, I got pickleball court.
You know what?
Done.
That far-fetched.
So we're, we will anticipate to finish the April 30, 2024 balance at about 3.6 million dollars for the fund. Next, we have our Melody Farm TIF District. This was designated back in 2017. The frozen EAV for that project or property was 290,000. And the estimated 2023 EAV is 44.1 million dollars, so a growth of just under 44 million dollars over the last six years. The outstanding debt on that TIF as of May 1, '23 is 17.2 million dollars. Director Lyons met with Spear Financial, which is our bond consultant, last week just to look into what the current status of those bonds are and, and what the life of those is going to look like as far as callability. What I'd like to report this evening is that at the current pace of the TIF, so meaning the village continues to make the current debt service payments, the increment in the Melody Farm TIF continues to come in at its current pace. With that staying the same, it's possible to have enough proceeds on hand to pay off the outstanding debt as early as fiscal year 2027.
So that means ending the TIF.
About 13 years early.
13 years early, which means all the tax levying bodies will get their full tax levy off of 44 million instead of 290,000.
Well, likely to be higher.
Likely, likely to be higher.
That will continue to grow.
Right.
Correct.
So what once was a forest preserve is now a nice asset to the village. Is now, and maybe we could just put a pickleball court in there, you know?
There, there are currently two va, uh, empty lots on the property, so that's, talk to Buttermilk or Shake Shack, and you can-
So when you guys look at the TIF, and it generates the increment in what we owe in our outstanding debt, I mean, it's like double, right, of the increment? So how do you decide? You take, you know, to end the TIF early, you look at the bonds and everything, is that how you, how do you determine what makes sense?
I mean, if, if a TIF district has issued bonds, that's the first thing, if there's interest in closing the TIF early, that was the first thing we'd look at, are the bonds callable, how are they set up? Does the RDA allow for paying the debt off early and et cetera? So there's still things we're exploring, but those are the, the critical pieces we want to look at. Make sure there's no other obligations that we would need to pay with increment or other considerations of redevelopment, of redevelopment, that we might want to do in the future. Because, again, 13 years left. Not saying that's this scenario, but those are the things that we would look at.
You said 2027?
Seven.
Yeah, 10 years, 10-year TIF, it would essentially be.
Oh, yeah.
And at that point, there would not be much in the way of any kind of infrastructure requirements to, I mean, it would still be new enough that it shouldn't.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, this scenario is, is a pretty good, successful scenario, so I wouldn't anticipate that.
As opposed to it-
Let's call, let's call the Melody Farm a home run.
Good job, Roger.
Yes.
Thank you.
What happens to, but you have that huge increment, where does that money go to, the 43 million? I mean, where is it?
That's the increment that is going to the TIF, that's not going to school districts, libraries.
I know that, but like-
No, that's not actual money, that's the EAV difference.
That's the value.
That's the EAV, right.
That's not a tax difference.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, right, right.
That's not the tax difference.
Right, because it's 33% of that, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
That's where we're in line, okay.
Yeah, that's the actual EAV.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So this slide will help, help paint the better picture. So at the top there, just the, the 4,606, that is the anticipated increment for, for budget year 2024. Again, similar to the previous TIF, we have the 10% general fund expense coming in as revenue, as payment in lieu of taxes. And then again, we're also seeing higher interest rates, which is leading to higher interest earnings represented as the 156,000. Under contractual services, the 127,225, the vast majority of that expense is the TIF's annual contract- annual contribution to District 73, based on a calculation of a per pupil rate per student generated by the TIF. So for reference, in 2022, our payment was $113,505, based on seven students generated from the district to District 73 at a per pupil cost of $16,215.
Well, and you can see by looking at the local taxes that the EAV over the last three years has only gone up, you know, has not gone up. The big jump in the EAV was the first five or six years.
Yes, they were.
First five years or so, four years.
Well, they were looking at additional, they were looking at additional students, so that they were looking at.
Now, now it's jumped, jumped 71 million EAV.
Well, the.
And we're talking Melody Farm.
No, the, sir, the estimated EAV for 2023 is about 44 million.
Is that what's being disputed?
No, what you're referring to is the, the valuation for the residential parcel on the property.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I believe the 71 million is the fair market value for the building.
That, that's correct, Kevin. That's for 2020 and 2021. 71 million is the fair market value that's been assigned to the property by the assessor. That's currently being challenged by the apartment ownership. And that's a lawsuit that the village has intervened in. If they're successful, in that case, they're looking to wind it back down to 51 million fair market value. That would mean a difference of about $500,000 annually to the TIF. That's the lawsuit that we have intervened in and we were going to talk about tonight, I believe.
So on the, on here, what is the EAV right now?
Atworth would probably be at about 24 out of the 44?
Yeah, I believe it's about 23 million and if I remember correctly, I think the appeal was to have it down to about 17 million.
Yeah, if you drop it from about 74 to 51, that would drop it to about 17. So the atworth is about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 24 of the 40, 23 to 24 of the 44 would be the atworth.
So the circled number at the bottom, the 2.8 million, that really is the best indicator of the, the financial health of the, of the Melody Farms TIF district annually. In essence, our increment coming in is exceeding our debt service and other expenses in the TIF by 2.8 million a year, putting our ending fund balance at just over $9 million. And then last, we have our newest TIF district, the Hawthorne Mall TIF, formed in 2020, frozen base EAV of $33.5 million. Not much activity here yet due to the ongoing construction. We're estimating the 2023 EAV to be approximately $34 million. Good news, no outstanding debt on this property. This was a pay-as-you-go TIF. The village is currently working with Centennial on amendments to the redevelopment agreement that was approved in 2021 to incorporate the change of the Phase 2 and 3 of the project. We're hoping to have more updates on that later this year for your review and consideration. A little bit of update on, on the Phase 1 project, the residential occupancy for the apartment units is expected this June through September. The retail occupancy is expected to begin also this June and the entire Phase 1 project site work and all is projected to be completed by October.
Which would mean another 12 to 16 months before we'd see the significant increase in the EAV.
Correct, because it'd be for the following tax.
Because of the lag on the fair market value going. It would be late '24, early '25 before we'd know the new fair market value.
Correct. And again, it's a pay-as-you-go TIF, so as, as the increment comes in, we make our obligation payments to the developer accordingly. Again, same information, $47,000 in increment projected to come in. Contractual services, we have a couple of items in there. We have some legal and consulting fees as we continue to work on the amended redevelopment agreement. And then we did incorporate about, equal to the expected increment coming in, about $47,000 of TIF-eligible reimbursable expenses coming due to the developer, since they'll likely reach one of their milestones on the Phase 1 project in the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay.
And that's all we have this evening for the budget. Again, a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting on April 4th and still on pace to approve our final budget at the April 18th board meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
And we will have a, a closed session this evening to discuss personnel and litigation. And that's all we have for the committee of the whole agenda.
Okay, so there's nothing else then for committee of the whole, right? So.
I move to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn to go to closed session for.
Second.
Pending litigation.
Those personnel.
And village personnel.
Personnel.
Okay.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Sheng.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
And.
We're forgetting.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned and we will not be conducting any further business when we come out of closed session.